Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, August 17th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Call to order. Item two, communication from the public committee liaisons. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Before we take any comments from the public, I'd like to remind folks that we have a three-minute limit. So if Brent, you'll help me keep time. And I think he has some warning signs if you get close to three minutes.
Two minutes.
So if anyone from the public would like to address the commission, please step forward.
Hi, I'm Tony Hopkins. I'm on the FISD school board. I got to introduce myself to most of you. Monday night, we had a regularly scheduled school board meeting, and we elected two new liaisons to the Planning and Zoning Commission, myself and Dr. David Montz. And so I just want to introduce myself. I know there's a number of new faces on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we're here, if you need to ask any questions of how something you're doing might affect the school system, we're here for you, as well as the superintendent Thad Ror and Connie Morgan-Roth, our director of business operations. So we're here to help answer any questions at any time. We won't be here at every meeting. As I said, I know you all have lots of meetings. We have lots of meetings, too. But we will be trying to pay attention, see how it affects us as a school district, and be available whenever it's needed in the opposite direction.
Very good. We appreciate your support. Anyone else that would like to address the commission?
So does this have to do with the matter at hand tonight, or?
Well, this is the open communication from the public, so.
Thank you for allowing me to address you. Good afternoon, everybody. Just to reiterate on the notes that we had last time, we had a communications. We talked about the fact that there's a Texas Local Government Chapter 213 that protects the Comprehensive Planning Act and the changes to that act. And also the fact that we talked about the pond and the validity of the approval to construct based on the completeness of the construction and compliance. And then we also talked about the fact that the pond is a liability and an attractive nuisance. And, you know, it's there, it's exposed. And we talked about the TechDOT 2016 traffic counts that is nearing the point where that Highway 518 needs to be expanded to six lanes. And that needs to be considered as we do construction on those areas, you know, because anything that we do is going to cost the taxpayers. We have to widen that highway, right? And right now, it's four lanes. If it goes to six lanes in the next year or two, that traffic counts for 25,000, then that's going to cost all of us money, just like it did on Highway 45 when they took down the Chick-fil-A over there. That's all taxpayers' money. So that consideration, you know, as traffic, traffic counts and impact to the taxpayers. And also want to mention the private real property rights outlined by the Texas Attorney General, you know, that allows us to have or be protected as residences and as owners of private property. And when we're forced to devalue our homes to commercial, from OPD to commercial. So I wanted to point those out, and we had some communications on it. We had some presentations last time, and I just wanted to remind you all one more time. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the commission?
Did we talk now about it, or?
Yes.
I did see the plan that you put forth with the buildings and... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Roxanne Gill, and I live on Leisure Lane. And my property is about almost as long as the retention pond. So about three lots down. But anyway, I saw your plan, and so why not make the OPD and that middle section that said retail center also an OPD? And then you could leave the third one a Chick-fil-A as a compromise. That way, you can control traffic. You still get your Chick-fil-A. You still get income to the city. It's a win-win by controlling traffic and allowing the OPD barrier still. And as somebody who lives on Leisure Lane, who also has OPDs behind me, I can attest to the fact that I used to have to see the KFC lights, which are almost four times further away, hear the noise and everything. But once they put up the medical buildings, the expansive buildings were OPDs, and they did block the noise. They did the buffer, just like what we bought into 20 years ago when we built our house. So, and we all bought into that area knowing what the zoning was and expecting it to stick to that. So anyway, I don't have a problem if we compromise and only put in that one section next to urgent care as a Chick-fil-A, but left the other two buildings he has on his plan as the OPD. And also made sure we made more stringent, like landscaping barriers, because that pond, the noise level has increased drastically because all the trees are gone. And it's not just, it's not really a buffer. It's just a distance. So up, you know, if you're going to upzone an area, then increase the zoning requirements with more buffers, more trees, and maybe put two buildings that are OPDs and one that's Chick-fil-A, and maybe that's a win-win for everybody. That's it.
My name is Cheryl Rowland. I live in Eagles Point subdivision. I just wanted to say real quick, kind of tapping onto what Roxanne said. Jim has reached out to us through John Scott. We are trying to work something that's amicable to both sides. We just received his plat two days ago. We have looked at it. Our neighborhood is going to be meeting and talking about it tonight to see what our views are on it and my personal views are. This was all about a Chick-fil-A, keep the Chick-fil-A, and keep everything else OPD to keep our buffer somewhat still present. That protects our neighborhood and gives the developer one of the things that he wants or the main thing that he wants. So that's all I have.
Phil Rattuso. I would ask that the city get heavily involved in this if we do change the zoning to allow the Chick-fil-A, and that the city, the contractor, and the public pressure TechDOT to figure out whether they're going to expand the roadway or not. And if not, to put in a right turn lane to help with the traffic and also to put in a signal light there at Leisure Lane. Because the city has, the public has some power, but the city has a real pressure with TechDOT. And that's, I would ask that the city council and all of us as a whole, put the pressure on TechDOT to get that right turn lane in. Thank you.
I'm Mike Rollins. I'm a resident of Eagles Point as well. Obviously, I think Steve Rocky has spoken really eloquently about this. You know, our original concerns and what we felt like was the OPD purpose in the first place and having the buffer for the neighborhood. We seem to be past that, unfortunately. I think that argument still is powerful, and it's really what the neighborhood is most concerned about, is rezoning this to something that's much more high-impact, much more high-traffic. Appreciate the efforts of Vergata in trying to address all of that. I think we all do. The, you know, the questions that I have and seeing what I've seen that they gave to us in the last two days are, is there any way that this is binding? I think that's something to consider. I think that if you're rezoning this entire plot to CSC and proposing that as OPD, I don't believe there's anything about that that's binding for us. So I would like some consideration of that. And certainly, the major impact of Leisure Lane, the potential curb cuts or guarantee of lack of curb cuts on Leisure Lane is about the only thing left that we have that can protect our neighborhood a bit more from the already increased traffic that's coming out on 518. We understand some of this is obviously outside the scope of P&amp;Z, but we certainly have a major traffic problem there that's going to increase significantly with this. And again, another point about that is the traffic impact analysis that we haven't seen ourselves. I don't know that that's adequately addressing the additional traffic, the additional cut-through that's going to come through on Leisure Lane. I know, you know, Mo made a comment when some of the consideration of Starbucks and the other, the Lidl and the other developments that are coming there, and, you know, traffic is going to follow the path of least resistance. Leisure Lane is certainly going to do the path of least resistance here. So this is going to have a major negative impact on our neighborhood. We're, I believe, we're all concerned, and I think rightly so. And again, some OPD buffer being retained here is something that is the closest thing to mitigation that I can see. Thank you.
I'm Jody Kuchta. I'm a member of Eagles Point subdivision. And just a quick recap with what, follow-up with what he said. The traffic is the main issue. It's not the Chick-fil-A going in. It's the traffic that Chick-fil-A will bring. And the fact that there will leave our neighborhood without a buffer. Right now, it's an office, if it's office-zoned, so if there was an office building put in there, it would be a nine-to-five office building. It probably wouldn't be busy traffic running through to and from. Right now, with school in, it's impossible to even get out from Leisure Lane. We have to cut through Polly Ranch to get out onto 518. And that's the big issue right now. It's not this Chick-fil-A. It's the fact that the traffic will be such a nuisance for our neighborhood and the fact that there will leave our neighborhood without a buffer. We'll be right next to commercial property. So thank you for listening.
Any other comments?
I'm Jim Peterson. I'm the property owner and the developer. We have met with numerous city officials, the residents, since this all started in April. Started out, our desire was to try to zone the entire piece CSC. We felt from a, from a real estate perspective, that's the best use of that land. It's arguably the best piece of commercial property left in the City of Friendswood. There's a lot of demand for it. I can tell you that for a fact. So through this process, we've taken all this input, and the main things we've heard back are traffic, and I think we heard that tonight, traffic and buffer, those two issues. Aubrey, I don't, are you able to put up that site plan that I had sent?
We can when we discuss the item.
Okay, so, okay, very good. So y'all will see that. What you'll see on that, where we initially had the entire 4.3 acres zone request, we're really, it originally started with eight, and we packed up to half. And now what we're proposing is to have a 150-foot OPD buffer on the corner that will come in, and then they'll leave the balance of the property CSC. So I believe that's what is up for consideration for you guys tonight. That's one issue. The second issue is, is we've removed the curb cut to Leisure Lane from our site plan. I don't know the procedures all that well, but I was told that you guys can send that recommendation up when you pass it, including that, and that's how council will consider it. So any concerns that they would have, that that's an end run, would be alleviated. So what we're trying to do with the traffic on the site is, we don't want to have one curb cut. We're working with the city right now to get the adjacent landowners' Lidl primarily, which they haven't bought yet, but to do cross-access with them, sharing those driveways, and that'll alleviate that. So anyway, that's what you're going to see tonight, and that's what you're going to consider. One other thing, this zone change, there are many uses in OPD which are more than nine-to-five. There's, is a distinction between the uses in the two, but it's much more subtle than I, and I think it's made out to be sometimes. There's a lot of retail-type uses in OPD that we can do there that I think will be just as distasteful as some CSC uses. So anyway, that's what I've got. Thanks for y'all's time.
Okay. Any other? All right. Item three, consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have three items. A, the minutes from the July 20th, 2017, regular meeting. B, minutes from the August 7th, 2017, special and regular meeting. And C, the final plat of the Tanis Plaza 6. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda as a second.
I second.
There you go.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question? All those in favor? I show it to be unanimous. Action items, so we'll move on to our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. I see that we have seven in attendance tonight, so we're good. Item four, consideration and possible action regarding a zone classification change request for 4.372 acres being part of Lot 26 of Voss subdivision, Howard subdivision, Reserve E., located at 1757 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from Office Park District to Community Shopping Center. Do I have a motion?
Motion to discuss. Second.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion to discuss. Aubrey, do you want to kick us off here with the background and the recent change?
Yes, ma'am. So I think as some of the public comments have alluded, in the past day or so, we've gotten an amendment to the zone change request. The original request was for 4.32 acres to change from the Office Park District to Community Shopping Center. We can pull up the exhibit on the screen. The applicant is proposing to leave a buffer of the OPD zoning. So that buffer, that area would be the depth of the property, which is about 340 feet, and the width of the OPD zoning to be remaining would be 150 feet. So it's approximately 1.17 acres. So that reduces the CSC area to 3.2 acres. With the reduction in the request, we can continue on the process. It doesn't require a new joint public hearing, so that doesn't impede y'all from making your recommendation to city council. We do require a recommendation to city council within 30 days of the close of the joint public hearing, so that's what we're doing tonight. And then city council will take this up at their next regular meeting on September 11th. Okay. And just, so any site plan issues we'll consider, this property will be subject to the community overlay district, whether it's CSC or community or OPD. So, you know, the landscape buffers, the building materials and everything for the COD would apply to both zoning districts. And it will, the development of that property, just like the Lidl and the Care Now, will come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for site plan approval. And so we can address landscaping, access issues, and those things at that time.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll open the discussion. Oh, yeah. You want to start us? Oh, okay.
Related to what you might call conditional approval, what in this, this planning and zoning action should we consider for conditional approval versus follow-on action regarding the actual design of the building and the plat and so forth?
The only thing we're considering tonight is the rezoning. So it's either rezone it or not. I mean, we can't put conditions on that zoning. So if they change to the CSC zoning, then the requirements that are laid out in the zoning ordinance are what would apply.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
A couple of comments I want to make. I'm going to reiterate what I said for the first time, came out back in April. You know, our city is quickly going to build out. In about 12 years, we'll be built out. And we're going to have this continual struggle. This is going to come up again and again and again for the next 12 years. Because just about all the commercial land we have left to be developed in Friendswood is either a butt residential or it's very close to residential. So it's very important that we realize this is going to continue for the next 12 years, and that we all have to work together to find a solution. I'm so pleased to see that the developer took in the residents' concerns, recommendations, and he's admitted his plan for the third time. So that tells me the process is working. We're all working together to get to a middle ground. You're never going to make the developer fully happy, and you're never going to make the residents fully happy. But there's always a middle ground. I think we got real close to the middle ground here. And so that's my initial comments. One other comment I would make, or Dick has mentioned, that what we're doing tonight is making a recommendation. That's all we're allowed to do. Zoning changes rely solely with council. They're the sole authority on zoning changes. So this commission is just making a recommendation. That's all we're doing this evening. And council will take that recommendation and weigh it against all the other factors they got to consider, public comment, city comments, all the other issues. So me personally, I'm looking at this strictly from a zoning perspective only, and there's a lot of other issues out there, but that's going to be council's job to figure that out. So that's any of my comments.
Eric, any questions, comments?
Just a comment. I was happy to see that we have stopped any kind of traffic onto Leisure Lane. I think that was something that was a concern to many of the residents. And I would just hope whether we're going to make this CSC or continue it as OPD, that we continue to work together, developer continues to work with neighboring businesses and residents, to look for the win-win, which I think, I know some people may not feel that way, but it certainly looks like to me that we are moving in that direction of a win-win. So, thank you.
Richard?
Yeah. So I did a lot of agonizing on this issue. The P&amp;Z's role up here requires balance. We're balancing the needs of the landowner versus the rights of the neighbors, weighing into what's good for the community as a whole, and being cognizant of the needs of the city. We're trying to balance all of those and its trade-offs, as some of the guys already mentioned. Here we have a very divisive issue. We've each received several emails from concerned citizens and several good discussion points brought up today. Some of this for, and many of them against. Those for tend to bring up the benefit of adding additional restaurant choices and economic benefit to our community. Those against tend to be neighbors who are concerned about traffic issues and bring up the very valid point that this is a change from what was originally promised when they purchased their homes. I've walked this property a few times now and consulted several people whom I trust on this issue, former P&amp;Z commissioners and others. The property has 580 feet of linear footage across 518. The applicant is proposing to take 150 foot of that for an office park, and the other remaining 430 foot would be for two commercial establishments, about 215 foot across each. I very much support the approach the developer is taking, like some of the previous people said, where the remaining OPD zone acts as a visual and noise buffer from the nearby households. The solution also will have minimal adverse impact on the traffic issue on Leisure Lane. I recognize that whatever decision we make on this issue would still have a traffic problem in this area of town. This needs to be addressed. I agree with a lot of the comments from both sides of the aisle here. However, nothing we decide today will solve this problem. Three hours ago, I wrote up this speech. You can see it. It's all fonted out, because three hours ago, I got the revised proposal. Three hours ago, I was going to vote against this. But now I plan to vote for it. It's a compromise solution, and maybe it makes everyone equally unhappy. Maybe that's the goal. But I do appreciate the idea that we're trying to get to something that works, and I do like the buffer that we've, that's being proposed here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff?
Not to duplicate some of the comments that have already been made, I do have one question, though. Back to you, Aubrey. Concerning Commissioner Clark's question, understanding about conditional approval, but how do we consider at this time the commitment from the developer not to put a cut-through under Leisure Lane? That's not on this agenda for this vote at this time.
No.
That's just a statement? So it's not, it's not binding in any way at this point, correct?
Correct.
Just the intent?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there something the city council decide on that? For the...
That would be a site plan issue that we take up when we consider the site plan approval.
Okay. I think we have compromised quite a bit today for both parties, and I thank you for that. That's very important. One of the, one of the only comment I have is the using the interconnections. You guys familiar with that? Just having a multiple company using the same road. I see that as another possibility. Other than that, this is a good meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Aubrey, I want to go back to, there was a question about, and I think it referred to the zoning, what makes this binding? What we are potentially going to address would change the zoning on that, the small portion, or believe the zoning the same on the small portion and only change the larger portion. And that is, that would be entered, if it's approved by council, if they decide that's what they want, that is, that change is permanent or it is what it is until somebody requests another change. It isn't an option.
Right, right. Yes.
Okay. And then the curb cut, because there was a question when we had the first, the original joint public hearing, and the question was, by the mayor, can you limit access on Leisure Lane? And the answer was yes. I just want clarification on, is that truly a site plan only issue, or can it be overlaid in some other fashion?
Can you take that up?
And I only ask because of the, because of the original question and answer, it's not clear to me. I understand the site plan can...
Can I add just one thing? The presentation you sent today had a description of conditional zoning. That's what I was specifically...
Right. So this whole site plan is not attached to this zoning at all. This is conceptual. You know, these are thoughts and ideas by the developer. This site plan is in no way binding to this...
Right.
We are solely considering changing the zoning of the property. If it was a specific use permit or a planned unit development where we were approving the site plan with the zoning, then that would be, you know, binding. But in this case, like I said, this is just basically a courtesy of the developer to provide this site plan at this time.
But it's fair to say that in the future, we will have a chance to review the site plan and control that at that time?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Is it safe to say, I mean, right now, this commission is in advisory role. Anything we do tonight, nothing's binding. Only council has that authority, correct?
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the other question I would have is with regard to the process since April, the original application, the modification of the application, and a change to that. In all of that process, there's not anything that has gone, that has deviated from standard procedure of the way that we always handle the business that we're here to do in planning and zoning, correct?
Correct. The original application was withdrawn by the applicant, so we started over with the new application, and so we redid the joint public hearing and everything. All the legal notices, you know, according to state law and our local ordinances have been given, and everything's been done according to state law and our local ordinances.
Okay. All right. And then the only other comment I would have is, I agree with many of the comments that have been made. I appreciate the effort to work together for something that can be of benefit for everyone. I am in favor of the change. I do believe that it will be a benefit to the community. I understand there are some significant concerns, in particular, traffic, and even potentially the detention pond ownership. But I think there's real potential there for that to be, you know, developed as an amenity. And if we continue to see the collaboration with the developer and the neighborhood, I think that's a real positive thing. So I am, I do support... In all of that process, there's not anything that has gone, that has deviated from standard procedure of the way that we always handle the business that we're here to do in planning and zoning, correct?
Correct. The original application was withdrawn by the applicant. So, we started over with the new application. And so, we redid the joint public hearing and everything. All the legal notices, you know, according to state law and our local ordinances have been given. And everything's been done according to state law and our local ordinances.
All right. And then, the only other comment I would have is, I agree with many of the comments that have been made. I appreciate the effort to work together for something that can be of benefit for everyone. I am in favor of the change. I do believe that it will be a benefit to the community. I understand there are some significant concerns in particular traffic and even potentially the detention pond ownership. But I think there's real potential there for that to be, you know, developed as an amenity. And if we continue to see the collaboration with the developer and the neighborhood, I think that's a real positive thing. So, I am, I do support and I'll recommend that council consider this change. Any other questions, comments while we're under discussion? Okay.
My initial concerns were, and some of them, I was going to support this and I still am, but with reservations. My two main reservations were traffic in Leisure Lane. It looks like that's going to be addressed. No curb cuts out on Leisure Lane. My other issue reservation is, it's not really a zoning issue, but it's in regards to that retention pond. Now, I understand the applicant doesn't own that detention pond, but I think the residents in Pillins Point have a very valid concern. That is an eyesore right now. It's not only an eyesore for the neighborhood, it's an eyesore for the entire city. You can see it from 518, and that needs to be addressed. And I think it will be addressed some way, somehow, at the council level or at staff level. But that pond does not look good. And it can and should look a lot better. So, that's my only reservation. I am supportive of this.
And I haven't really spoken on this, on this subject, but I do understand that what the decision means tonight for us, whether the recommendation to go forward or not. The real work in terms of getting an acceptable layout of the property and all that is going to be done at follow-on meetings where there'll be plenty of opportunity for input. So, I will support as well.
Okay. I think it looks like that concludes our discussion. Do we have any other motions?
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Okay. Well, we have a motion to approve on the table. Are there any other comments that any commissioner would like to make? Okay, with that, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Did we? I saw it was unanimous? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, it's hard to see out to the side. Item five, consideration and possible action regarding appointments to the P&amp;Z liaison schedule. And I know that some of you submitted your desire, and I've talked with some of you about the new assignment, but this is what I'm going to propose. And if you're, if it's acceptable, good. If it's not, we can discuss the timing. So, after going through city council liaison, Joe, if you don't mind doing that with me being your backup, I have a little issue with 430 sometimes, so... We'll work that out. Community and Economic Development Committee. Eric, are you willing to take that one on? Galveston County Consolidation Drainage District and Construction Board of Adjustments. My friend Brent, are you willing to take those? Library Board, Walter? If you would do that. And I think you all have a copy of the, when the times are for these meetings. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Dick? If you'll take that one. Keep Friendswood beautiful. I have had for a couple of years and I'm happy to keep that. And Friendswood ISD, Richard? If you can help out there. So, if anybody, if you do find out you have a conflict or something later, and again, my understanding is, you represent planning and zoning with these other acting bodies and whatever issues that you can bring back from them to us and vice versa. So, we appreciate your support in that, in that regard. Any other questions about the liaison schedule? Okay. I thank you for that support. Item six, consideration and possible action regarding P&amp;Z Subcommittee assignments. We have a planning Subcommittee and an ordinance Subcommittee. I know we've talked about these several times. And so, what I would ask is that Brent continues to lead the planning Subcommittee with Eric and Walter and work on that list of planning items. And so, we're excited about picking this work up again. We've had a little bit of a lull and so, I look forward to see what's going to come out. And then, the ordinance committee, Richard, Joe and Dick, if you would work together in that regard. Brent has been leading the planning Subcommittee and I think that can continue. As far as the ordinance committee, if you guys want to get together and decide who wants to be chair, just, you know, let us know and that'll work. And I think, I assume that Aubrey is still available to support the planning committee and Becky is still available to support the ordinance committee, so...
Absolutely. And I will email out our to-do list so y'all can kind of see the work laid out before you.
All right. Any questions there? Okay. Item eight, communications from commissioners. Any suggestions for future agenda items or general comments? And we'll start with you, Dick, on your end.
I don't have anything. Thanks.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this time.
I have nothing as well. Item eight B, our council liaison. Jim, do you have anything to...
Well, thank y'all again for what you do. Tonight was a great example of this working with residents. And I'm very pleased myself. And what we did tonight was good for Friendswood and good for the residents. So, appreciate your efforts.
Item C, the staff.
We do item number seven real quick.
Item seven. Oh, sorry. I apologize. Consideration and possible action regarding future Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates. You want to go tell us, Aubrey?
Yes. Our September meeting dates are going to be our regular meetings. September 7th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers and the 21st as well. We won't be having to meet with city council for September, so...
Very good. Thank you.
Is there much on the agenda already? Or do we, is it busy?
We don't have a whole lot on the agenda. We're hoping to knock out...
Good.
Yeah, that will be welcome. Thanks. Okay, now we're ready for staff comments. Any, anything?
The July 2017 DRC report was in your backup material. It was a little skinny month. We just had our West Ranch monthly meeting and one development meeting for a possible development on South Friendswood Drive in the downtown district. So, things are still moving along in the downtown. And then, the APA conference is in Frisco. I think I have several of you signed up, so we're excited about that. And hopefully, learn good things there as well. It's a, it's a good trip. It's very informative and I think it'll be good for everybody.
All right. If there are no other comments, we stand adjourned.